This time I'll call an August fifteenth, twenty twenty second county council meeting to order. At this time, I'll recognize Tom Aldette to lead us in invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support. As we begin this meeting, help us engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as we represent our community. Please watch over our students, keep them safe as they head back to school, and lastly, we continue to keep Brandon and his family in our prayers. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. We got a big crowd tonight. Curious to know which item on the agenda will bring the most discussion. Just to say, and it was an idea that was brought up from one council member, we did want to put this on in honor and remembrance and condolences to Brandon, your son, and this is the first meeting we've had since then, and we just all want to express our sincere thoughts and condolences to you and your family. The first item that we have on the agenda is the oath of office for newly appointed board members, board and commission members. So when I call your name, if you'll come forward, and our county attorney will meet you at the front so that you can be sworn in. Donnie Mitchell, York County Forever District Three, Chrissy Stewart, Keep York County Beautiful, District Three, Jonathan Nguyen, and Megan Hilton, Keep York County Beautiful at Large, At this time, I'm going to recognize Sheriff Tolson, who's going to come forward and help David Duncan, Culture and Heritage Commission, District Three, Annie Wheat, Culture and us to recognize Lieutenant James Ligon on his service and retirement with York County. Heritage Commission, District Six, and Kelly Shannon, Board of Disabilities and Special
Good evening.
Needs, Maxabilities at Large.
And once again, I want to thank council for taking the time to recognize another quitter.
It looks like some of the folks didn't, weren't able, we've got some coming in. David, come on up here.
Let me tell you a little bit, he goes by Mike.
We're gonna get you sworn in, and first just want to say on behalf of the council and
I don't think I've ever heard him called James.
the York County residents, we appreciate the fact that you are willing to volunteer
Mike just retired last month, but he does not have the ability to quit.
your time to get the business done of the county. You don't get paid to do what you're doing, and you rarely get thanked, but we do want to say thank you as a council for the service, and we appreciate what you're doing.
I was kidding about the quitting joke. Mike is going on to be the deputy director of the Catawba Indian Nation Police Department, which is now being formed, and so he'll still have a good relationship with us. Mike retired with twenty-five years, how many in Dope? This guy came and did dope every day for twenty years at the office, and never tested positive. Let me tell you something about narcotics. I worked it for a few years, had a lot of fun, I was a single guy. Twenty years in narcotics is a lifetime, it is a lifetime in our career. And not only did this man right here sacrifice for this county, because you can't imagine the schedule as a drug agent and a supervisor, his family sacrificed. His family sacrificed him because he missed a lot of functions with his family in order to keep, continue to try to keep drugs off of our streets. And there's nobody that I know, other than Marvin Brown, that was longer working in narcotics, and it's to be commended. Mike is to be commended. He's really shy, he doesn't talk a lot, you never know what's on his mind, and I'm going to hell, because all those are lies. Mike's been a great guy, he's been a great friend, he has been a great officer, and his dedication and his sacrifice to the county is certainly something that I'm proud of. I'm proud to commend him, I'm proud to call him a great staff member for us, a great friend and a brother of mine. Congratulations, Mike.
I thought I was getting a Rolex.
That's twenty-six years. You want to say anything?
Yeah. And Sheriff, thank you for the gracious words. It has been a long run, it's going to continue. I hope our partnership with the sheriff's office will continue and with the county. We see a lot of good things coming forth with this new partnership with the sheriff's office and the Catawba Nation as we go forward with travel police. I want to thank each and every one of you here and those that have come before you with the years of service that I have done here with the county. It has been a true pleasure to protect and serve. I'll still be doing it, just from a different venue, but we will still hopefully be giving services to the county as well where I'm at currently. But again, I want to thank everybody, I want to thank the community. It has been a good ride, and I appreciate each and every one of y'all, I appreciate those of you who are here tonight and those who can't be here. It has truly been an honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. We're all excited that you get to retire, just to turn straight in and going straight to the nation, but we know they'll be in good hands, and we are looking forward to the partnership that will come forward out of that. We wish you well. Thank you so much. At this time, we have public forum session, and this is an opportunity for us to hear from you. And so there are a few ground rules. You get two minutes, and I hate calling time on people because I sound rude, I'll do it if I have to, but when I call your name, if you would, please come forward, and then if you'll state your name and give your address, and then please pay attention to the blinking light at the top, it'll start blinking, and it time passes quicker than you think. But when that starts blinking, that means your time is up, and I'm going to need to close that thought off, but this is an opportunity again for us to hear from you, not for us to talk to you or to communicate or to have conversations. Some folks ask questions, and then some council feels uncomfortable that we're not answering it, that we're being rude. We don't do that. It's just for us to listen to you. We would ask therefore that your comments be general comments that are pertaining to county business and that you not, you know, have any personal attacks, I'll have to call, have to stop that if that happens, but usually it doesn't. So I will start with the first person on the list. It looks like Sam brought us, but he scratched his name off. If that was an error, you could please come forward. Okay. Joe Ross.
Joe Ross, two seven five Rippling Creek Drive, York, two nine seven four five. Good evening. I'm the Recreation Director for the Town of Clover and a representing member of the Recreation Coalition. The Recreation Coalition has met many times over the past four months, working diligently to prepare a proposal agreeable to all entities represented. After much discussion and negotiation, the most recent vote on the Recreation Supplement Distribution Formula were seven-one on June ninth, and then eight-one on July twenty-seventh. One holdout preventing the Recreation Coalition from presenting your required unanimous vote has repeatedly stated that they will be fine if the Recreation Supplement Fund sunsets. However, sunsetting the Recreation Supplement Fund will have a detrimental effect on the Town of Clover, the county residents who participate in Clover Parks and Recreation programs, and other municipal recreation programs within the county. On average, sixty-five percent of participants in Clover are county residents. Reality of sunsetting the Recreation Supplement Fund will result in increased taxes on those residing within the municipal boundaries and increase the fees of those county residents who remain to play in the programs offered by the municipalities. What other options will we have to do to make up for the funding? There are too many scenarios of how and who this will impact negatively to describe within the allotted time. I hope that this council will have the foresight to understand the implications if the Recreation Supplement Funding is cut.
Thank you, Mr. Ross, right on time. Thomas Dismuks.
Good evening. I'll write on Joe's coattails. My name is Thomas Dismuks, I live twenty-five oh seven Locust Hill Road, York, South Carolina. My name is Thomas Dismuks, and I live in York County, but do not live within Clover limits. My wife and I, along with our five children, do however participate in Clover Parks Rec Services, and have participated and enjoyed their recreation programs as players, coaches, and just as fans of their events that are available. Believe me when I tell you, I'm the last person in the world that would vote for more taxes or government laws. I will however yield to paying my fair share of taxes for recreation programs. We work to recreate. I work so that I can have the joy and freedom to watch and to watch and coach my children and others in sports that will further develop their social and physical and character skills. I am blessed to own a large piece of property and beautiful home, and in doing so, I have the privilege to pay a nice sum of taxes for said property. In truth and out of selfishness, it is in my best interest to pay taxes for public school system I don't use, we homeschool our five children, and pay taxes for several other services that I may or may not use, because it is for the betterment of South Carolina and York County to pay those taxes. It is in our best interest to have great schools and a phenomenal recreation program. Few people can provide all the recreation services needed alone. As our community, our body, we, I, will happily pay my fair share of taxes to provide recreation facilities and services at a fair price. As I mentioned earlier, our family is very involved with Clover Parks and Recreation, as well as other park recreation departments. The season will be our fifty-ninth team to coach. However, if this tax is allowed to sunset, the consequences of higher recreation costs would absolutely, would most assuredly prohibit us from further involvement. I ask you council members to not sunset the recreational supplement fund, thereby allowing our presently great recreation activities to continue to be affordable and available to all. Thank you, council member.
Thank you, sir. We have, I think it's Pat Grant.
Thank you for your time and for your service. I am Pat Grant, I live on Normandy Way, and that's a little group of fourth street county streets within the near heart of Rock Hill. And I'm speaking today for the current Recreation Assistance Program, speaking in favor of that, and also expressing my appreciation that as a county resident, I've been able to attend the city programs at the cost of the city residents. In February of twenty-twenty-two, the city of Rock Hill started a program called Lifelong Learning for Seniors, and at that month, I started as a volunteer history teacher for the area history and also leading guided walks to places of historic interest for local people. And the most common comment that I heard in all that time is that I've lived in Rock Hill in York County all my life, and I've never heard this. And I explained that it was because of the lack of opportunity until the city opened the Lifelong Learning Program. And now that what we learn in the Lifelong Learning Program goes farther than the classroom because they go home and they tell their family, they tell their friends and their grandchildren. So we're educating more than just the people who come there. One half of our attendees are county residents, and with that, you can imagine that if the cost increases, they're going to decrease in participation because a lot of the seniors like me do not have a cost of living on their retirement check. So we're very careful with what we do. One of the greatest things that the city has offered has been this Lifelong Learning Program. And to my understanding, there's nothing that equals it in the county, either in caliber or variety of courses. And so it also can be said that it's a program that will better the health of the seniors because it increases our learning, our socializing, our development of friends, our physical activity, and then it allows us to give back of those talents and those abilities that we have been given. So I'm here speaking on behalf of seniors and to say that we appreciate the county having this Recreation Assistance Program, and we ask that it remain as a part of the county program, and thank you so much for considering these comments.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. T S Bowlin.
It's actually T J Bowlin.
I'm sorry.
No problem. Twenty-one thirty-three Gillette Drive, Clover. This is also regarding the Recreation Tax. What I want to present is some observations and conclusions after familiarizing myself with the ordinance, watching the meetings, and the workshop that was presented a few weeks back. I would say I think this is a service all of y'all want to continue to provide. That's my impression of how y'all view this, but at the same time, there's not a plan moving forward of what to do, and that's what I find troubling about this more than anything. It's been a discussion long before the first reading came to light. The Rec Coalition has been cited for not reaching a consensus on a plan, but as already stated tonight, they have to operate within your parameter of a consensus, and there's one load holdout in that consensus. In my opinion, the municipalities are already preemptively being blamed for that they're gonna have to respond to a lack of funds as well too. And I'd also say some of the thinking that has gone into why this should be sunsetted, excuse me, is simply misguided. One in particular is the way that travel ball has reshaped the need for exports. I've been a part of three different, four different rec programs now in three different areas, not just what I'm at now in Clover, and that idea is simply not true. It's undoubtedly true, participation in travel ball has increased, but not to the point where the need is present to reshape recreational sports. In fact, there's plenty of kids who are never going to play travel ball, who can't play travel ball. Rec Sports provides a physical, emotional, and social outlet for them, you know, those who can't participate in that. Personally, I can attest to how this has helped build relationships with the community. I moved to Clover in twenty-twenty. This has been one of the ways in which we've built relationships in the community. Local governments should be encouraging such things, and in this case, with this tax, this council is the local government. It's not the Rec Coalition, it's not the municipalities, it's y'all. And I think y'all want to continue this, but again, we don't have a plan moving forward, and it doesn't make sense to say, let's kill what we have now, and then we'll come up with something else, given that no one has been able to do such to this point in time.
Thank you, Mr. Bowlin. Brenda Adams.
Hi, I'm Brenda Adams, and my address is six twenty-seven Brick Cliff Road in Rock Hill, South Carolina. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, and I just wanted to share some concerns. First of all, I'm a veteran, Navy veteran, a mother, and a seasoned businessperson. I've been in Rock Hill for over forty-five years, actually, and I'm actually concerned about the lack of due process in our court systems and our criminal justice systems. My core belief is that we need to stop the proliferation of arbitrary rule, and we need to restore the rule of law and equal access to the law. We need to teach skills and enable personal and business success, and not the promotion of blind political allegiance. From COVID to unprecedented inflation, time is of the essence if we are to get back on track to prosperity, equal opportunity, and fair treatment for all. Far too many of the personal and financial setbacks that we're experiencing are the result of our government's failure to recognize and extend due process rights to all citizens. Due process is a constitutional right, not a privilege. Due process embodies and protects the civil rights that can create exemplary communities that are thriving on constitutional, not political practices. Due process is the enemy of corruption, and every community leader needs to have a zero tolerance policy for those who would deny due process to others. The bottom line is that I look forward to participating in the restoration of a profound sense of justice, fairness, and confidence in our local, state, and federal governments. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate you letting me voice my concerns.
Thank you, ma'am. Brian Maluski, I know I messed that up.
Good afternoon, thanks, everybody. My name's Brian Maluski, fourteen thirteen Jakey Drive in Fort Mill. I'm in not supportive of the sunsetting of the Recreation Assistance Funding. My two kids, Braden and Kellen, are avid BMXers with BMX, bicycle motocross. We have one of the best facilities in the whole country in our backyard. We travel from Fort Mill three, four nights a week, we practice three, four nights a week, we travel occasionally, we go race against the best in the country, we go beat the best in the country, we practice on Tuesday nights with Olympic athletes. So this program directly supports something that is a pillar for my neighborhood, for the kids in my neighborhood, the kids that don't want to play stick and ball sports, they go ride bikes, we bring them to the track, they get introduced to a whole new lifestyle, BMX, what is it? The track is something more than just racing, it's a family, it's something you can go do on a Tuesday night, it's something you could do on a Wednesday night. In addition, we mountain bike, we mountain bike all through Fort Mill, all through Rock Hill, we mountain bike, we cycle, we go to the velodrome. These are all things that aren't available in every community, so we're very much supportive of continuing the funding to those programs, and we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Bradley Sabelli.
Good evening. My residence is two zero nine nine Coverbridge Court, Rock Hill. Thank you for having me. I'm the Vice President of the Arts Council of York County and an Advisory Board Member to Rock Hill's Parks Recreation and Tourism Department. I'm not in favor of sunsetting the budget ordinance for the Recreation Assistance Funding for the following reasons. Financial hardship concerns for families, especially for those underprivileged families paying higher fees per program per family is just unsound and irresponsible. Access must be given to a variety of programs not provided by the county, such as arts programs, senior citizen programs, people with disabilities, youth athletic programs, and summer camps, such as access must be provided to many diverse facilities not provided by the county, from the state-of-the-art sports facilities such as the Sports Events Center, the Miracle Park BMX, and many of the Recreation and Community Centers, where I have been involved since two thousand thirteen as an art and theater instructor for senior citizens. The PRT programs that I also teach are not only in those facilities, but also at the Gallery one twenty in Clover, by lessening the opportunities of creative and physical activities that improve the body and stimulate the mind and demoralize individuals young and old. Mental health benefits of art examples ease of stress, boost esteem, improves cognitive abilities. Chronic pain often is accompanied by depression and anxiety, and the abundance of outdoor parks, art galleries, municipalities that provide an outlet for pain management without drugs. I focus mostly on the arts because that is what I do, and I'm proud to report to you that I have taught over eight hundred senior citizens and children in Fuel Park alone, and many more in the Center for the Arts in Rock Hill and the Gallery one twenty in Clover. Do the right admirable thing, support these programs. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Tommy Williams.
Hi, my name's Tommy Williams, I live at eighteen hundred Berrywood Lane, York County, right outside of Clover. Nan, over here, she's my stepdaughter, and we've been together for fifteen years. Due to the help from the York County Assistance Funding Programs, she's been able to participate in the therapeutic recreation programs in Rock Hill. I have seen lots of valuable growth in Nan's, such as self-development, self-reliance, and she has acquired lots of friendships due to the funding that York County has provided, and I would like for our tax dollars to continue funding that program, because right now, if they don't live in Rock Hill, they're talking about tripling the prices and stuff for some of this. So anyway, we appreciate York County's help on it.
Thank you, sir. Nan Toth.
This is Nan Toth, she lives at eighteen hundred Berrywood Lane in Clover, and she would like to say a few things as an adult with special needs about these programs.
Please don't take away my programs. I love them so much.
Say thank you.
Thank you, Nan. Beth, are you, you signed up as well?
Also eighteen hundred Berrywood Lane. There seems to be a lot of comments about this program being sunsetted, none of them seem to be that people want it to end. I had a speech made up, but I think it would be more to my timing to tell you some of the programs that the adults with special needs use, at a very reasonable cost for people making with a government check eleven hundred dollars a month. They get to participate in pottery, wheel, hand-built, watercolor classes, alcohol ink classes, photography, jewelry-making, card-making, and a dance troupe. All of that's combined into a very beautiful program called Tap into Arts, where they get to be the artist, and people come and view their work and maybe purchase it. There are also the Merry Mosaic Studios, where people, and we invite all of you to come down to Boyd Hill and see their art every day, and you can purchase it there. That's a great way for these people to have pride in themselves, that no way else, no place, I've lived in three states, I have never seen programs like this, that offer mind, body, and soul development for adults with special needs. Some of the other things my daughter participates in or has been asked to participate in, but she refuses to participate in kayaking for some reason, would be camp arc, day camp, resident camp, and I have said for many years, if I had to, if I asked my daughter, we need to cancel Christmas, or we need to cancel resident camp, which one's going? Christmas is gone because she's going to resident camp, and we hope soon that it'll be open back up for us to do. There are exercise programs to keep their mind, body, and soul going, tabletop games, bingo dances, horseback riding, bowling, cooking classes, we've had classes on recycling and taking care of the earth.
Thank you, Ms. Toth.
Have a great day.
We appreciate it, thank you. Nicole Knight.
My name's Nicole Knight, I live at four zero five five Highway three twenty-four, Rock Hill. I'm just outside the city limits, and I'm also opposed to the sunsetting of the recreational tax because of the impacts on families like ours. We don't reside in Rock Hill city limits, just outside there. We have two small boys who enjoy playing all the sports through Rock Hill City, basketball, football, soccer, and the current funding allows our children and children like ours to be able to participate in these sports with affordable fees. This fall, we registered our boys for tackle football at seventy-seven dollars and flag football through the city at fifty-seven dollars. Those fees could be tripled and doubled if this tax is sunsetted, and that would make families have to make difficult decisions on whether or not those children could play sports. This keeps our kids... cancel Christmas or we need to cancel resident camp, which one's going? Christmas is gone because she's going to resident camp, and we hope soon that it'll be opened back up for us to do. There are exercise programs to keep their mind, body, and soul going. Tabletop games, bingo dances, horseback riding, bowling, cooking classes. We've had classes on recycling and taking care of the earth.
Thank you, Ms. Toth.
Have a great day.
We appreciate it. Thank you. Nicole Knight.
My name's Nicole Knight. I live at 4055 Highway 324, Rock Hill. I'm just outside the city limits, and I'm also opposed to the sunsetting of the recreational tax because of the impacts on families like ours. We don't reside in Rock Hill City Limits, just outside there. We have two small boys who enjoy playing all the sports through Rock Hill City, basketball, football, soccer, and the current funding allows our children and children like ours to be able to participate in these sports with affordable fees. This fall, we registered our boys for tackle football at $77 and flag football through the city at $57. Those fees could be tripled and doubled if this tax is sunsetted, and that would make families have to make difficult decisions on whether or not those children could play sports. This keeps our kids active. They need that outlet after being in school all day, and it keeps them busy. So, you know, in addition, the facilities that Rock Hill has are very unique to our area. Being able to play basketball at that new sports complex is very exciting for kids, and we're able to do that with this tax. So this would be a huge financial burden if this was sunsetted, and many parents would have to make difficult decisions on whether they could let their children play for fun. And so I hope that you would consider all the parents and families across York County when you're making your decision tonight.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Tom Farmer.
My name's Tom Farmer, 1123 Gold Rush Court. We visited Rock Hill's BMX Supercross Track in 2017 to watch the UCI BMX World Championships. Two years later, my, both my boys started racing both at the BMX track and at the velodrome. We've enjoyed all of these facilities, which are not found anywhere in the county. In a week, you can find Farmer Cycles, our team, which is a collection of families and kids from the BMX and, from BMX and from the velodrome. You can find any one of our 16 riders somewhere at one of the, either the BMX track, the velodrome, the Criterion Course, or the mountain, one of the numerous mountain bike trails. All of our riders live outside of the city of Rock Hill. Farmer Cycles, as a team, we participate in state, regional, and national levels for BMX. One of our riders is actually in the top 20 in, for her age group, right now at the national level. And next year, we hope to qualify many of our riders, or, in 2024, we hope to qualify many of our riders for, when the UCI BMX Championship returns again to Rock Hill. All of this is made possible by, the, both the facilities provide practice passes for unlimited training opportunities for us at both the BMX track and the, the velodrome. I'm not in favor of sunsetting the budget ordinance for recreational assistance because the resulting increase of cost of participation at both of those facilities would just be too high for it to continue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And thank you to all of you who, who have come out to speak tonight. It's important that we hear from you, and that concludes our public forum. That's the last individual who's signed up for that. We'll turn now to the rest of the agenda. Do we have a motion on consent agenda?
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion?
Make a motion to remove number 15 from consent.
Our, our policy is anyone council member who wants to remove something from consent can do so, and so we will move number 15 to, um... Number three in new business. Is there anyone else who wants to remove something? Okay. Do, all in favor of the motion as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. We move now to our first public hearing, our only public hearing. Rezoning action, hold a public hearing and consider first reading case number 22-19, tax map number 723000079, to rezone from UD to LI, 28.518 acres in District 1. Mr. Bueno.
Good evening, council members. This request is to go from the Urban Development District to Light Industrial. The overall rezoning request covers 28 and a half acres, although the proposed project has a much smaller footprint than that, so I'll go over that. So the applicant is seeking to do a parking expansion for an existing distribution facility. It's a FedEx distribution center that's on the parcel to the immediate west, and their proposal is to take about 10 acres of the 28 up for rezoning and to combine it with that existing facility to expand their parking. And so all of the additional cars and the trucks for distribution would be accessed off of the office park there. So the remainder of that acreage of the 28, the 18 and change, would be left as unimproved property, and, but it would carry that LI designation going into the future, so it would be easier to develop in the future. So here's an overlay of what that acreage looks like, so you can see the existing facility there on the west side, and they are merely adding parking as part of their proposal for the rezoning, and the remainder of that forested area adjacent to 77 would remain that way. So for this area, the existing facility is already zoned light industrial, so this would add on to that parcel. There is other light industrial in the vicinity. This would remove the Urban Development District, which is a legacy district for the property under the proposal. And for the comprehensive plan, this is I-77 corridor employment as the future land use designation. It also has a community center node overlaid on top of that, and the existing distribution facility meets the comprehensive plan for the goals there. So due to those factors, staff recommends approval of this application, as does the planning commission by a vote of six to zero.
Before we open public hearing, are there any questions of staff?
Question.
Mr. Hampton.
What's driving the need for additional parking?
You'd have to ask the applicant what the additional need for the parking is. I'm not certain what their needs are.
So this location, again, this, you know, it fits into the surrounding areas that is under what's currently in that area. But the question I have is that the exit and entrance to this parking lot, is there going to be a second exit to this? And you may have shown that on here, and I might have missed it.
Yeah, so they're going to use the existing access for the FedEx facility that's on Lakemont, so that's where they'll come off of, and you can see there's a connection proposed there from the existing parking lot to the new expansion. So it will not be accessed off of Foothill Way.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff before we open? Thank you, Jonathan. At this time, if there's anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this request, if you'll come forward and state your name and address before you speak.
I'm Adam Essing with Suncap Property Group. We're the prospective developer for this. Just wanted to see if there's any questions I could help answer. It sounds like you had a question about the operational capacity. Tenant is just looking to increase, or they've simply run out of parking. They do this a lot across the country, so we're just looking to help them meet the needs so they can satisfy the, the distribution and sorting of the county they serve.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak against?
Second.
Motion in a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion on first reading?
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. We move now to Old Business. Rezoning action, consider second reading, case number 22-13, tax map number 65400008, to rezone from AGC to RSF 40, 2.88 acres in District 1. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. We move now to number two in Old Business. Rezoning action, consider second reading, case number 22-14, tax map number 78900018, zoning to, from RSF 40 to RUD 1, 5.05 acres in District 6. Do we have a motion on second reading?
Move to deny.
Second.
Motion in a second to deny. Do we have any discussion?
I just need to make sure I'm looking at the right thing. I apologize, I got... This is for the Hansmill Highway? Yes. Motion to deny.
Okay. The motion's on the floor. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Rezoning action, consider second reading, case number 22-15, tax map number 71600086, to rezone from LI to GC, 6.69 acres in District 1.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion in a second to approve. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. We move now to number four, Old Business. Counsel to consider approving third reading of an ordinance to abolish the special tax district known as the York County Recreation Tax District in York County effective as of December 31, 2022, as described more particularly herein, to specify the time and application of the final levy of taxes for the operation and maintenance of the York County Recreation Tax District, to provide for the winding down and cessation of operations of the York County Recreation Tax District as an administrative division of the county, to provide for a public hearing, and to provide for other matters related thereto.
Motion.
Ms. Rodette.
Yeah, I have a motion to deny sunset. Instead, modify existing ordinance with this amendment with the following request. And I've passed out a document that talks about the numbers. The approved document I'm looking to have approved is similar to 3B2 with some small modifications. Along with that, I also would add as part of the motion that moving forward, each of the REC committee members will make their revenue needs request directly to counsel for the next year and the years to move forward. And then the council then will make the final decision on the revenue distribution. Each year, the areas receiving the REC funding will need to show how the revenue was used to benefit, and also to show no additional fees were charged to the unincorporated residents for those benefits that are stated.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Yes. First, we'd like to start off by thanking the REC committee. There was a lot of time spent on this. It's been several months, and I do want to thank the REC committee to get together, to have those discussions, and to come up with, what we look at is a seven to one agreement with this. This, as you saw earlier, is critical for the county, and I think it was our goal here to get a unanimous agreement. But when you put this effort into it, you start seeing the value that it brings to the community. As you look at and hear some of the stories that we talked about tonight, and as, as we look at our community as a whole, I look at our students and our, and our people that live in this community, and I look at their physical needs, their emotional benefit. You look at kids that have, that need to be outside, that need to be active. This is critical for them. It's critical for families. It's critical for lifestyle that we have these type of facilities, and it's critical for seniors in our community. This is, this is a lifestyle that, that we have been having for years in this community, and it's part of our community. I think by having this discussion tonight, I think that we can come up with an agreement to continue this ordinance to go forward, to make some changes, to make it more, easier to move forward each year and to be worked. And I think it's critical that we, we move forward with this motion in order to keep this in place and take care of the needs of our community.
Mr. Goffey.
Yeah, so I've been torn completely on this, back and forth, back and forth. And I'll tell you what, the reason I have a problem with this tax is that the majority of it is put on business owners. We already have our businesses paying for education, and now we're asking businesses to subsidize recreation as well. I understand homeowners talk about what the tax is, and I shared at the last meeting what a small amount that is per individual within the county. However, being a coach for many years within the city of Rock Hill, I cannot, in good conscience, remove this from the children. I would have never have voted to approve it to begin with, and especially with everything that has happened recently. Kids need to have... The amount of kids that come out, a lot of those kids were, they're like family, and it's because I've coached them, they've been friends with my boys all these years, and it teaches them to have confidence, discipline, that they fit, that they get along, and there's nothing more important than that in this community. So I will not be voting to sunset.
Any other discussion?
I think, you know, we've, I've been rather transparent from the outset of this discussion that I did not support sunsetting this program. But I, so, you know, my feelings are well-known, but I do want to thank the people who have came out tonight because I think it's important to remember, and it's important for everyone up here to have the reminder, that it's, it's easy to get sucked into the, the math of, you know, the different municipalities tugging at the different dollars and get convinced that that's the issue. That's not really the issue. The issue is access to recreation for, for people in the unincorporated areas of the county. So to hear from the people who actually benefit and enjoy those programs, I think was important to everyone. And I agree with Councilman Goffey that these programs are critical to the development of youth in our community, and if we're going to continue to be such a prosperous community that we need to invest in that development of our youth. So of course, we'll support the motion. I second it, and I appreciate Tom and everyone on the committee's efforts to come to some kind of resolution on this. I know it's been rather hard fought, you know, everyone has kept their nose to the grindstone to try to come up with something that works for everyone. I think what we've ended up with, thanks to the, the hard work of Tom and the committee and everyone else who's worked on this, is an equitable solution for the division of the funds, but more importantly, an improved process for next time so that we don't have the same discussion with a stalemate of a loan holdout every single time. So I do think it's important to, you know, have this decision-making within the council body and have some additional transparency, and, you know, if we have some transparency in the numbers, it'll be a much, it'll be a lot easier to tell how much this is benefiting the people in the community. So again, thank you to everyone on the committee. Thank you to everyone for coming to share your stories, and thank you for the people in this council that have worked so hard for it.
Mr. Winkler.
I think everybody knows where I stand. I've fought ever since the first time we talked about this rec tax, to try to keep it and try to, you know, I, I feel like it's very important to unincorporated parts of our community. And there were some new points brought up tonight. I want to thank you to the citizens who came out and spoke because, you know, we've always talked about it, it was being for the, the parks for the children and stuff, and, and I haven't thought about what the parks do for the seniors and for our special needs. I mean, I know we've got, you know, we, Rock Hill has the one park specifically dedicated to special needs and stuff, but, but, you know, we haven't mentioned that when we've been up here talking about how important it is to the community. So thank you all for coming out and pointing that out to us, and thank you again to, to Tom and, and all the municipal, everybody of the REC committee, you know, from Lake Wiley to Rock Hill to Fort Mill and everywhere, York, all of you, all the municipalities and, and REC providers participated in this. I'm just glad to hear that it sounds like we might be able to keep this funding going a little while longer.
Mr. Roddy.
Thank you. I'll start off by saying, I was on the, I was on the side that was talking about sunsetting. And the reason why I was on the side of sunsetting, because there's no actual structure as to how this money is supposed to be divided, how it will move forward every year after year. I thought the assignment was for the committee, the REC committee, to go back and come back with a formula of distribution going forward. Every vote that I've heard that was taken was based on, well, how much is York going to get? How much is Clover's going to get? How much is Fort Mill going to get? And now to hear that, what we're going to do is put it back on county council to come back and decide, that's putting the politics right back into it every single year. What I thought we were sending out was, come back with a formula that tells us that everybody can agree on, and every year, we're plugging them at the... and every year we're plugging them at the top. And that formula would dictate how much each person get. But what we got is people agreeing that, I'll take this this year, I'll take this this year, I'll take this next year. That's not a formula. And all the while, we've heard about what this money means to different parks. We can get somebody to come up here on whether it's a rezoning, whether it's a tax, whether it's a program. It means a lot to somebody. And we can't make every decision based on what it means emotionally. Because we just denied a rezoning for a resident to have farm animals because it does something for their heart, their soul, it does something for a family member. We didn't approve that rezoning based on that emotional attachment. Maybe I misunderstood the assignment that was sent out. But we sent out a charge for the rec coalition to come back with a unanimous decision that everybody could agree how funds would be split up. But what we got and what we heard back week after week, call after call, was, well, we got 7-1, we got 6-2. One entity wants 50% of what's coming back to the district, that's not fair. They're putting in 50,000 and they want 200,000. Well, that formula doesn't work. And so maybe I misunderstood what we charged you guys were doing. And I think it was, a lot of phone calls made, a lot of pressure being put on people saying, if you don't do this, you don't do that, we're gonna do this and we're gonna do that. That's not the way it's supposed to work. And I understand that, and I'm the biggest recipient, I'm the biggest sports player up here. I played a little bit of baseball, I played basketball at Emmett Scott. I played football through the Y. Every single year from age nine till I graduated high school, I played every single sport. I participated in city, so I know the value that it brings. But we weren't, we didn't charge the committee to go back and bring us something that says, bring us something with value. It was supposed to be a formula that says, this is how we split the money up. This is how we're gonna do it this year, this is how we're gonna do it next year, this is how we're gonna do it year after, for the next five, six, seven years. We're at this point because the formula that was put in place, am I correct? Maybe 15, 20 years ago? That formula doesn't work. It's worked for a long time, and it came to a point that we said, hey, guys, we need a new formula. We know it works, we know the programs works for people in the community. We weren't here questioning whether these programs are valuable. We were questioning, did the formula work? And we've changed the narrative of what we were charging the rec coalition with. We know baseball means something to a lot of kids, we know basketball means something to a lot of kids. And when I heard some of the speech and spiel, it was like saying county residents are poor residents, they can't afford it. That's not the case. I lived in the county. And when you hear people talking about what it means to be able to go out to the BMX or the Velodrome, well, those bicycles cost thousands of dollars. So we're not talking about the impact it makes on the low-income, the underprivileged. We changed up what we were trying to figure out, was a formula that works every single year going forward. We didn't do that. We come up with an agreement that says, for the next year, each person's gonna get. I see the previous year, I see what's proposed. What I was looking for to come back from the rec coalition was a formula that says, if we have this amount of money, whether it's based on a percentage of each municipality is gonna get, we plug that number in, and that formula tells each municipality what we're gonna get. I don't like the idea of that every year, that this amendment that Rodeck made puts it on county council to determine. That's purely political. That's purely political. What we need is a system and a formula that says what we're gonna disperse to each municipality to subsidize rec. That's a much better system to operate on because we all know the loudest voice in the room when it comes to figuring out who's gonna get the money, who can get the biggest name to make the calls to District 2, District 4, District 5, District 1. Hey, we need a little more over here, they're not doing as much as we're doing. Support us getting more. That's how this is gonna play out over the next couple of years. What we really need is a formula that says, here's how the money will be split up, and we just plug that number in, and that formula will tell us how much municipalities are gonna get. I think it's gonna come down, it's gonna be so unfair, it's gonna be out of balance that the majority of the people will be happy, but the majority of it won't be fair. The only way we can have a fair year in and year out is we have a formula. And this is no way, this is not a formula. This is throw it up against the wall, and whoever happy with it, the majority can be happy with it. Was it difficult to get an 8-0 vote? Absolutely. Was it fair to ask them to do a 8-0? I don't know. But I can tell you, from what I've seen and heard how this is working, we started 15, 16, 17 years ago with a formula. Now we don't have a formula, we just say, county council decide. I think this fund's taking in about 1.5 million. So now, we don't have a formula that says how this money will be split up. We're gonna have council basically agreeing. When for 15 years, we had a formula, you plugged that number in, that formula told you how much Rock Hill was getting, how much Clover was getting. It took the politics out of it. And we weren't looking to cut the rec funding to do away with it. We were looking to sunset it so that we can fix the formula. If we don't fix the formula, we back here again next year because someone's not gonna agree with getting 150,000 when someone else is getting 400,000. If we had a formula, we wouldn't be back here next year. We wouldn't be back here the year after that. So obviously, we see the will of council is to not sunset it. But what we're doing is kicking the can down the road, we're not fixing it. And we all sit up here, week in, week out, month in and week, month out, and say, let's not kick the can down the road. Let's fix the problem so that it doesn't come back next year. Because it's gonna come back, and I guarantee you, someone's gonna be dealing with, how much do we give to Lake Wiley? How much do we give to Clover? How much we give to Fort Mill? We shouldn't have to decide that each and every year. We have a budget that we set for each department that we do every year. But we should not be deciding on rec funding and how much we give to each municipality from up here. Why do we need a rec coalition to go figure stuff out if we're gonna bring it back here? So I see the will of council is not to sunset it. It probably won't get sunset if you're taking a straw poll of what was just said, but it doesn't fix the problem. We don't fix the problem until you can stop it here and revamp it and put something new in place. That's what they did 15 years ago. We're not on the same system from 15 years ago that we were on 30 years ago. It was a different formula. That formula ran out, they got together and say, let's do it this way. But this doesn't fix the problem. I'll support it because I see that it's gonna go that way anyway, but this does not fix the problem.
Ms. Love. I just want to say something about that loan holdout. Perry Johnston was on this county council when this came to pass. It's his idea. And he was the loan holdout that met with those guys, women, from the rec coalition. And I agree with Councilman Roddy, we've not solved the problem yet. But I think part of the problem that we have is different than just whether or not rec funding ends. I think the problem that we have is that you as taxpayers don't understand this rec funding. And I believe that creating fear in you that this is gonna be pulled out from under you is unfair to you. So I'm not in favor of sunsetting this. I've worked very hard to keep from sunsetting this, and I'm not gonna vote to sunset this tonight. So everybody can take a deep breath. But I want to add to the motion that's been made tonight in just a couple of minutes. And I want to tell you where this began and why this began. It's because when I look out over this room, if you live in York County, I consider you equal. And I believe that you should pay an equal tax. I don't believe that this group over here should pay a tax that you don't pay, that everybody in this room benefits from. So this began because I feel like I'm charged as a councilperson. I'm elected to be sure that things are equitable for everybody in York County. And that's what I've done, that's why this came up. I have gotten these numbers as equitable as I can possibly get them at this point. I do believe that going forward, there needs to be a little more tweaking because the people in the Field Day Park footprint are paying more than almost all of you. And that's not fair, that's not equitable. And I've heard, you know, I've gotten a lot of emails, I've gotten some nice emails, and I've gotten some ugly emails. And one of those ugly emails mentioned the haves and the have-nots. This was never about the haves and the have-nots. We want everybody to have. That's the point of this. Everybody should have the opportunity. So I'd like to add to the motion, and is this the appropriate time to make that?
If you would like to make an amendment now, we'll give you the time.
Yes, I would like to make an amendment. I would like to amend that we direct management to prepare an intergovernmental agreement to be executed before the funds are distributed to ensure that county residents outside city and town limits pay the same thing as those living in the city and town limits. That's because the threat of this going up three or four times, I can show you where one particular entity is already charging three or four times. So if you backed out the numbers that they are receiving, and you said, if you took their real numbers and said, they're gonna charge us three or four times more, they already are. Equitable is very important to me. It's very important to me on your behalf. Second part of this is I would like for council to consider redefining the ordinance.
So is your amendment the first part, or is it two parts together?
Two parts, yeah. And the second part is to, for council to consider redefining the ordinance between now and the next council budget period, which would be about February...
Session, no action was taken. Do we have any motions?
Our only motion is to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.